And to meet with Lisa Traumovich on behalf of Shakespeare's Associates. So is there anyone who wishes to address us on this topic before we go into the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, the city--
I take it that's a no, but emphatically, okay. Hard for me to hear that. So there's no one, so I'll close the public comment on the closed session item. And at this point, we'll adjourn into the closed session and we'll be back at 7:00 for the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for the record, the City Council will not be actually meeting with Ms. Traumovich in closed session, but rather with the city's negotiators, who will meet with Traumovich outside of that room. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's Monday, April 25th, 2022 Hybrid Regular Meeting of the Livermore City Council, starting at 7:00 p.m. Like to call the meeting to order. And could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Here.
Councilmember Monroe?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banano?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here. Now, if everyone could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask the city attorney if we have any report of action taken in the closed session.
Mr. Mayor, this is Jason Alcol, your city attorney. No, the city council did not take any reportable action in closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're now on to agenda items in the three. And I want to let you know that I'm going to reorder in three, three and three, four, so that it's a little bit smoother for us handing out the proclamations. So I'm going to start with 3.1, which is the proclamation declaring May 2022 as Drinking Water Awareness Month. And it's going to be presented to representatives from Zone 7 Water Agency, California Water Service, that's CalWater, and Livermore Municipal Water. It'll be accepted by Zone 7 Board President Angela Ramirez, CalWater Regional and Community Affairs Specialist Rob Sealy, and City of Livermore Management Analyst Anthony Smith. And I will read the highlights of the proclamation, and Vice Mayor Banano will present the proclamations to the people as we go here. So I'll start with the highlights. So we have, as I said, we're proclaiming Drinking Water Awareness Month, May 2022. And whereas water is our most valuable natural resource that provides public health protection, fire suppression, support for our economy, and drives our way of life, Livermore Municipal Water, CalWater Service, CalWater, and Zone 7 Water Agency work together to provide this vital service to our community. And whereas Livermore residents and businesses are encouraged to help protect waterways from pollution, use water wisely, become involved in local water issues, now therefore, the City Council, the City of Livermore, proclaims the month of May 2022 as Drinking Water Awareness Month, recognizing the vital role tap water plays in daily life and the importance of essential water professionals working behind the scenes to provide safe drinking water to the community. So now Vice Mayor Banano will present the proclamation. So now Vice Mayor Banano will present the proclamation.
Congratulations. Would anyone like to say a few words?
On behalf of Cal Water, we'd just like to say thanks and recognize how proud we are to be part of this community and the service to its residents. We've been here for a long time. We really appreciate the partnership of the city and this kind of recognition and focus on such an important resource. Very proud of the work that we do and look forward to continuing.
Thank you. Zone 7 turns 65 this year. And so during this Drinking Water Awareness Month, we thank you and especially appreciate the local partnerships that we have. Clean drinking water is a cornerstone of healthy community, and we all work together every day to make that happen. So thank you for your acknowledgement.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor and Council, Anthony Smith from the Water Resources Division. Just want to say thank you for your recognition of this important month. And I want to say thanks to all of our staff who work tirelessly to make sure that the customers in our service area have clean, safe drinking water every day.
Thank you, and congratulations again, and thanks to our community for doing a good job saving water.
Okay, up next is a presentation of the 2022 Livermore Water Conservation Art Contest Awards. And that's pretty good to see all the artwork and the effort you guys put into this. So I've got a presentation here, and hopefully I get in sync. So the so we have, let's, okay. Not sure that, let's, hang on a second. Okay, so we've got the 2022 Conservation Art Contest winners, and it's going to be presented by Livermore City Council Angela Ramirez Holmes, Zone 7 Water Agency Board President, and the California Water Service, Cal Water. So May is the Drinking Water Awareness Month. And for the past 30 years, the City of Livermore, Cal Water, and Zone 7 Water Agency have celebrated the occasion by sponsoring an art contest for Livermore students. And each year, the contest has a different theme to teach students about water conservation or the importance of water in our daily lives. The theme for this year's contest was, quote, "Water's Journey." And it was to challenge students to learn how Livermore's drinking water travels hundreds of miles from the Sierra Nevada to our taps. And we felt that this theme was especially important this year, since the drought has greatly affected how much of our water supply comes from the state water project. And after narrowing down dozens of entries to the 10 finalists that we'll introduce tonight, their artwork was uploaded online to allow the Livermore community to vote for our contest winner. And we were delighted to receive more than 1,200 votes from community members, which was a lot of interest. And here are this year's Livermore Water Conservation Art Contest winners. And students, when we call your name, please go up to the front of the room to receive your award from Vice Mayor Banano and take pictures. So the the first one is honorable mention to Matthew Seong, homeschool, second grade, and our see, his artwork is called Water Travel Map, because it shows how our drinking water travels a long way from the mountain tops to our taps. Congratulations, Matthew. Okay, our second is, award is for Jun Woo Hong, Sunset Elementary, first grade. And her artwork is called Livermore's Water is From the Mountain Tops. In general, hopes this artwork will remind Livermore to save water. Congratulations. Okay, our next one is Vidica Chaudhary, an eighth grader at Joe Mitchell K. to 8th School. And Vidica's artwork is called Water's Journey, because it shows how water travels throughout California to get to us. So congratulations. Our next one is honorable mention to Vadi Hey Chaudhary. And she's an eighth grader at Joe Mitchell K. 8th School, and it's called Water's Journey, and shows how water goes through filtration and water retailers before it reaches our homes. Congratulations. Up next is an honorable mention to Donggun Park, and a second grader at Sunset Elementary School. Dongke's artwork is called Water's Great Adventure, because it describes the journey of water from the Sierra Nevada to our homes. Congratulations. Up next is an honorable mention to Jude Mitsui Mata. Our, is, she's a second grader at Lawrence Elementary School, and his artwork is called How Water Gets to Our Homes. Let's Look at Water's Journey. And while creating this artwork, he learned that every drop of water is precious, so we should use water wisely. Congratulations. Up next, honorable mention to Yusu Ra Wishuke. And our, is, this is our final honorable mention award for night, is a kindergartner at Lawrence Elementary School. Her artwork is called Water's Journey to Us. It shows the importance of water in daily life from drinking to swimming. Congratulations. Okay, we are now on to third place for Anapurani Umaranath. And she's a seventh grader at Mendenhall Middle School. And her artwork is called Water's Journey Puzzle. Shows how the water cycle works and how people use water in our city. Congratulations. We have second place. And this year's, the second place winner is Abigail Dow, a fourth grade homeschool student. And her artwork is called Livermore's Water Journey. She showed how water from Lake Orville flows down to the Tri-Valley to to Lake Del Val, and to be cleaned at water treatment plants. Congratulations, Abigail. And now, we're on to very special, maybe of the first place, Anna, let's see, Unai Garg. This is the grand prize winner of the 2022 Livermore Water Conservation Art Contest. And she's a seventh grader at Mendenhall Middle School. It's a, called, a water's, artwork is called Water's Droplets Journey. And explained that a water droplet travels through many places before reaching the tap. Snow melts from the Sierra Nevadas and flows into the aqueduct. Some of our drinking water comes from underground, rain, and lakes as well. The water goes through the water treatment facilities and into our taps. The beige color in the background symbolizes the valleys surrounding Livermore. Congratulations. Okay. Now, I think I mentioned that I was going to, so congratulations to all of you. That was really great work, and thanks for your interest in this, and it's really, you know, in these days, very important for our community. So thank you. So we're going to go to three, four next. Pardon? Oh, go ahead.
So I wanted to just say how much I appreciated seeing all of the contest entries. And this year's theme is particularly important, because it does speak to how we're all connected. And I wanted to note, to those of you who might be sometime in the future going to Livermore High School, there is an AP Environmental Studies class, which will enable you to learn more about this at a different level, and do this kind of work through your classes. So just letting you know for the future.
Okay, so we're, thank you so much. It was great work. So we're now on to 3.4, which is the Affordable Housing Month proclamation. So we're declaring the Affordable Housing Month, May 2022. And whereas quality affordable homes are vital to healthy, safe, and racially just communities, and rising housing costs led longtime residents to be displaced, live in overcrowded homes, or experience homelessness, threatening our region's racial diversity and economic opportunity. And whereas jurisdictions such as the City of Livermore have a responsibility to advance programs and policies to promote affordable development and affirmatively further fair housing for low-income communities and communities of color, whereas regional housing organizations are continuing to recognize May as Bay Area Affordable Housing Month, because regional action to expand affordability and stability are key. Now therefore, the city council, the City of Livermore, recognizes May as Affordable Housing Month and supports affordable and stable housing at the local, regional, state, and federal levels. And this is being accepted by Eden Housing Senior Project Developer Matt Graves.
Thank you very much. On behalf of EVO East Bay Housing Organizations and one of its member organizations, Eden, both organizations want to express their sincere gratitude to the mayor and to the city council for the dedication and earnestness they brought to providing housing in Livermore. It's definitely noticed and very much appreciated and inspiring. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, up next is the item 3.3, which is the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission Annual Update, presented by Commission Chair Evelyn Arroyo.
Thank you for having me. Do I, is it on now? Does it work? Okay. Okay, yes. All right, thank you. Um, so thank you for having me. As was mentioned, I am the chair of the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission. And today, I'll kind of be sharing with everyone a little bit of, well, a lot of what we've been working on this year, especially now that finally we had our first meeting in April, our in-person meeting. So it was very exciting. We got to meet each other for the first time in two years, and I have a lot to share today. Um, so LIAC, these are our duties and responsibilities. We primarily work with youth and young adults. And we try to work with the private and public sector of the community to address care, health, safety, welfare, and education in our community. And we want to really get more youth involved to care more about what youth want and have our voices heard more so. And we've been really working on how to create activities, volunteer opportunities that will target our group, or a group of youth in the community to really get them excited about concerns they may have or things that they want to improve. Um, so this is our current LIAC information, our youth roster, our adult members. And we usually meet monthly, every first Monday at 7:00 PM. Um, so for our projects right now, and our current subcommittees are active. We initially started these three subcommittees in 2020, because we were online, and it was the best way that we could get different active projects going while we were social distancing. And the ones we have been continuing to work with are the Climate Change, Community Service, and Equity and Inclusion, each one with different purposes and projects. So the climate change, well, we primarily address climate change. And recently, we've been trying to work to better our services in our schools with how our trash is, so it's recycled and put in the proper bins to also help students learn more about why it's essential and important. So we've been trying to reach out to schools to see how that project will be launched if, in the incoming future. We've also had a community service group where we've had different community service projects. The bike build, it was bikes being built for students and youth in the community to have. Fertile Groundworks is a group here in Livermore, and we just take a volunteer day and help with the crops. And we also have several other projects, but another one, and finally, the Equity and Inclusion, the one that I will be mentioning, is an arts project that we are hoping to launch next year for students and youth up in high school to submit a media contest to kind of explain to us or express their experiences here in Livermore as a person of color or anything that they'd like to express as a youth growing up in Livermore through that media. To, yeah. So, um, another thing that we were mostly on the receiving end was, we got a lot of presentations to learn more about our community, because I think that to, in order for us to do a better job, we also have to understand how our community runs and how everything works. So we had different presentations from the Cultural Art Vision, the Asset Management Program, the Imagine Livermore 2045 Plan. And we had a group talk to us about safe routes to school and why that matters. And we had a talk about the Livermore sanitation, as well as different resources available to the community, like the Horizon Family Counseling. And we primarily gave a lot of feedback on the youth perspective to these individual presenters. And this is just a couple of pictures of our current LIAC commissioners. And as you can see, we have really pretty smiles. And so, yeah, all of us in these pictures are working on a project together for the bike build or just other volunteer opportunities that we've had over the year. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you for all you've done, and especially persevering through the pandemic. So thank you so much for what you've done. Any, anyone else want to say something? Let's see, I think Councilmember Kik, would you like?
It's nice to meet you in person. We had you help with our interviews. And it's really amazing to me that not only are you working on doing your own projects, but that you're taking in that information about how the city works. Because to be an effective advocate in your community, you need to know who's in charge of what. So to make change, you're making sure that you know how things work and who to ask for help when you need it. So congratulations on everything you've done, and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us.
Okay, Vice Mayor Banano?
Thank you, Evelyn. That really was a great presentation. It was great to see all the work you guys are doing in the community. So please pass those. Our congratulations and our thanks for all the work you do to your fellow commissioners. As you probably know, the Climate Action Plan is being finalized, and hopefully sometime this year, I shouldn't say hopefully, sometime this year, Climate Action Plan, staff is nodding. Climate Action Plan is going to be completed. And what we're going to really need to do at that point is do outreach with our community. And what we're going to really need to do at that point is do outreach with our community. And we'd really like to engage you and the rest of the commission in that work because it'll be a critical piece of communicating what's in that plan and getting everybody engaged and on board with with the things we're going to do in that regard. So just want to thank you very much and good luck for the rest of your tenure as Chair.
Thank you. I'll make sure to bring that back to our commission as well.
Great.
Okay, next is Councilmember Monroe.
I'll I'll add my thanks for the good work that you're doing and the connection to the community. Um, I wanted to ask you a little bit of a follow up to the providing feedback. You had a number of presentations, you gave feedback, you all gave feedback to, you know, to the to the people making those presentations. Would you be able to share with us some of, you know, not not all of them, there's, I believe, seven here? But pick your favorite and just talk a little bit or pick two of your favorites and talk a little bit about what the what the group in general gave as, you know, thought were the problems, the issues. Anything you want to say about any of those presentations?
Something I remember us discussing because this was a year-long presentations. Uh, one of the more recent ones was one of the Safe Routes to School. And a lot of our commissioners were talking about how that was a real concern we've been having. Because a lot of the, there's a lot of traffic that comes around before school or after school, kids being picked up. And it can feel really unsafe. So a lot of us have been talking about how we can help them and their efforts to reach out to our schools, to create better plans, to engage more youth and parents as primarily parents with their younger children to encourage them to walk to school. So those are the kind of feedbacks that we've been talking about and how we can help them also contact our principals at our schools if they're having issues with that connection. Because sometimes as students, we have the opportunity to see our principals or people at our offices in person. And sometimes that can also create a little more pressure to let these organizations and to help our students feel safer.
That's great. Thank you. Um, one more follow up. With regard to that, were there areas in particular or was it just schools in general from kindergarten all the way through high school or?
It was all, all, all the, all the, all the students that attend the school here in Livermore.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you and thank you. And thanks also to your fellow commissioners for all the hard work in the past year. So see you next time.
See you.
Okay, we're now on to agenda item four dot O, which is Citizens Forum. And City Clerk, could you explain the process for participation in the Citizens Forum, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during Citizens Forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matters, subject matter jurisdiction. Agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comment when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely as noticed on the agenda. To provide comment in person, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chambers. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from members of the public who are in person first, followed by those wishing to speak over Zoom. To provide comment by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the beginning of each item. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon apologies, will begin upon arriving at the lectern or upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record.
Okay, typically we allow 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for a public forum. And if we have any spillover, we'll take it at the end of the meeting. And that means that if we'll go until eight o'clock and the city clerk will announce when there's five minutes remaining. So could we find out how many speakers do we have in line for this at this point? And could we have the first speaker?
Honorable Mayor, the first speaker via Zoom is Alan. And following Alan is Joseph McThorne. Alan, please unmute yourself.
Mayor and council member, with Earth Day last week, I remember all too well a year ago at a county supervisors' meeting when special interest groups blocked a local solar farm. These groups argued that, quote, "The public need for solar is over-stated or doesn't exist," end quote. Yes, that's what they said on Earth Day. Now, similar groups are still speaking against solar farms at the county level. We will need both rooftop and industrial solar to meet California's energy goal minimums, according to the Department of Energy's 2021 report. According to the recent IPCC report, failure to reverse the climate crisis will be catastrophic. Not only will our fire seasons worsen, the mass extinction will continue to devastate the endangered species these special interest groups claim to protect. Rather than spending hundreds of thousands on litigation, these groups should be running campaigns to reduce energy waste. Or they could be raising funds to offset the increased costs of building solar on warehouse rooftops or above parking lots. Instead, their actions are delaying solar production and worsening my climate dread. Jean King is a spokesperson and fundraiser for these special interest groups and Joan Sepla promotes them in her newspaper. Both those two are currently on the Board of Directors of Livermore Valley Performance Arts Center. And I encourage my fellow citizens to contact LVPAC if you feel their board directors should not be endangering our future. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joseph McThorne, followed by Stacy Kennison, followed by Amber. Joseph McThorne, please unmute yourself.
There we go. Are you able to hear me, counsel?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Joe McThorne. I'm the president of your Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters Local 1974. I know you've heard me speak before, but I'm speaking today in the hopes of securing a fair contract for your firefighters. We're now 115 days without a contract. We're seeking a fair and equal treatment and contract, just as you have provided for your other labor groups in Livermore. We only ask to be treated the same. We have provided you with fair, factual and consistent proposals that would benefit not only the city and provide us with an equal and fair contract. Your firefighters have fought on the front lines through all wildfires, through COVID, and we continue to respond to all your 911 emergencies in Pleasanton and Livermore. We only ask to be treated fairly. We have high hopes to establish a fresh new start with our new city management. But until then, we are in limbo. We continue to see the effects of no contract with delayed responses in our communities, such as in Ruby Hills today in Pleasanton. Although Pleasanton is the lead negotiating partner for our current contract, Livermore continues to stand silent, which can only mean that you endorse this kind of unfair treatment of your firefighters. Pleasanton continues to rack up the cost of these negotiations by using stall tactics. We have, we were asked by the arbitrator to expedite the next phase of impasse to have a meeting on April 27, just a couple of days from now, and your negotiating team refused to meet. We were also asked by the arbitrator to meet on May 11th. That was again denied. This issue could have been resolved by next week. But instead, you're, you continue to spend unnecessary money on attorney fees and stall tactics from the city of Pleasanton's negotiating team, lead negotiator Art Hardinger. This, another stall tactic that they are providing is I have made a Public Records Act request 95 days ago. This request would give you fair, accurate information for the JPA for these negotiations. It seems the city of Livermore should have a, have a say on who and how the money is spent for fire department negotiations. Your firefighters are respectfully asking you, the City Council, and specifically our JPA board, to intervene in these negotiations for a fair contract. If you have any questions, any of you can feel free to reach out to me by phone or email and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have with factual information. Thank you.
The next speaker is Casey's, excuse me, Stacy Kennison, followed by Amber, followed by Gabriela Gonzalez. Stacy Kennison, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you so much for allowing me to talk tonight. Uh, my name is Stacy Kennison and I'm tonight representing the L A R P D Foundation. We wanted to talk to you tonight about an event that we're going to be hosting in May, on May 21st. But first I wanted to give you a little bit of background. The L A R P D Foundation has been around since 1993, supporting the Livermore Area Recreation and Park Districts by providing scholarships to children, adults and seniors who couldn't afford to participate in L A R P programs. As we come out of the pandemic, we understand that the need for support has increased and we wanted to help. So the L A R P D Foundation is hosting a fundraiser called Wind Down in the Grove. And this fundraiser will help to advance our community support program and allow us to provide scholarships for more people than ever before. We hope to reach our fundraising goal of $50,000 with this event. But I want to tell you all about the event. So this is the fun part. Wind Down in the Grove is the first ever fundraiser of this kind and event of its kind to be held at the beautiful Sycamore Grove Park. This unique experience is going to be something like no one's ever seen before. It'll be held on Saturday, May 21st, from three to six P M at the Arroyo Road entrance of Sycamore Grove Park. We're partnering with Wenti Vineyards, South of the Laws, the Park District, L A R P D, David. And we have porting partners of Darcy Kent, Almost Famous Wine Company, Pennyweight. And basically this event is going to be wine and beer tasting. We'll be doing a silent auction. We have food pairings and there'll be winery room tours. And we'll have local rangers from L A R P D on site to provide history of the area of beautiful Sycamore Grove Park. We're also be providing a silent auction as well. So again, this is going to be a really fun event. And we're really hoping that we can raise our goal of $50,000 and just really support all of the people in our community that do have a need to participate in the programs. The programs that they are able to participate in is anything that L A R P D offers. And we're hoping that people can come out and support.
Stacy, I'm not sure if you can still hear us, but your audio is cutting out.
Oh, I can, I can hear you. Can you not hear me? Is that better?
You said silent auction and we've missed since then.
Oh, no. Silent auction. Um, it's just going to be a really great event. And we're hoping that it can, we can raise our $50,000 to support more people in the community than ever before. I wanted to give you the website if you wanted to get your ticket or.
We still can't hear you, but we do want to hear what you have to say. So can you please be sure that you email all five of us?
Yes, I will. Can I just give you our email?
Sorry about the technical difficulties.
Can I give you our website address?
Mayor and council member, she's asked if she could give you the website?
Yes. If you have questions or want to.
You can say it. I can see it on the.
Okay, great. So our website is L A R P D.
L dot A dot R dot P, L A R P D.
The L A R P D dot org slash foundation is the website.
Dot org slash foundation is the website.
Yep. And I'll email the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we could get a repeat of the details on the event, just so we get one clarity on that so everybody knows.
We could reach out to Ms. Kennison and include it in our supplemental packet after the meeting, Mayor.
Okay, great. You didn't come across on this speaker again. I think I heard you, but you'll do it in a.
We'll provide it in the supplemental packet.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll move on and we'll come back to that. I have to, I don't have that open at the moment. Does anyone else have that open that could give the, it'd be good to just, let me see if I can get to it. Oh, she's going to send it in a separate package. Okay. All right. Yeah. Sorry about the technical difficulties, but it's a, a great event, what I heard, Saturday, May 21, to support L A R P D and the foundation. So if something everyone could go to, so we'll, I don't know, we'll get it in the supplemental packet, but please. Yeah, just where is it again? I didn't hear.
It's Wind Down in the Grove, L A R P D Foundation fundraiser, May 21st, three P M to six P M. And if, I think if you Google Wind Down in the Grove, you'll be able to find it and sign up for it. Don't do it too fast so I can get there first.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Can we have the next speaker, please?
The next speaker is Amber, followed by Gabriela Gonzalez. Amber, please unmute yourself. Amber, please unmute yourself.
So let's move on to the next one and see if Amber comes back.
Okay, we will go to Gabriela Gonzalez. Gabriela Gonzalez, please unmute yourself.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Mayor and council members, we're experiencing some technical difficulties. Could we take a five minute break?
Sure. So we're taking a five minute break to resolve some technical difficulties here.
I wonder if he did something because it wasn't me. Because it's not. Test, test.
You're not off.
Yeah, she says.
Test, test, test.
I can hear this speaker now.
Test, test.
Test, test.
This is Gabriela. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yes, I'm ready when you are.
Okay, just a minute, please.
Okay, it looks like we've resolved our technical difficulties and we'll get started.
Testing.
According to the board, everything's up and running.
Test, test, test.
I have this one.
I think mine's working.
Test, test. Is it?
Testing, testing, test, test, test. Test, 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 test.
Test, 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 test.
Test, test.
Testing mine. Awesome.
Mayor and council members, we're ready.
Okay, let's continue.
Thank you for your patience, Gabriella Gonzalez. Please unmute yourself.
I think I'm unmuted. Excellent. I wish there was a way for me to share my screen or share my video, but apparently there's not in this forum, so I will go ahead. Mayor and council, thank you for your time. I'm coming to you today as a concerned Livermore homeowner, a mom, and a volunteer with Moms Demand Action. I urge the council to vote in favor of safe firearm storage, which is Agenda Item 6.2 this evening. On October 1st, 2017, I survived the maze terror that was the Las Vegas shooting. Every day, I live with the ramifications of that night, a lifelong journey with clinical PTSD and the pervasiveness of gun violence in our culture. While the Vegas shooting remains the deadliest mass shooting to date, we all know there have been countless other incidents of gun violence since then. It begs the question, when will we learn? It's on you and I, all of us, to take initiative to change the reality of gun violence as a public health crisis. Part of my decision in buying a home in Livermore was the dream of living in a family-friendly community. However, that dream, one that surely you believe in as public servants, is one that requires active choices to create. That dream gets rattled every time I pass the gun shop down the block from my house when I heard about the Livermore Freeway shooting just a few weeks ago, and especially when I see the unmistakable data about gun violence. I have a four-month-old, who I am stepping away from nursing and bedtime routine this evening so that I can speak with you and advocate for his future. When I was pregnant with him, I thought a lot about our Livermore community. The fact that nearly every day in this country, one small child unintentionally kills themselves or another child after finding an unsecured firearm typically in their home. Every day, on average, two teens commit suicide using an unsecured firearm from their home or relatives' home. Eighty percent of school shootings are done by student or former student of the school using an unsecured firearm obtained from their home or relatives' home. As my child grows up in Livermore, goes to a friend's house, goes to school, how will these statistics impact his life, our community? It's terrifying to consider. But the silver lining is this, thinking about what you and I have control over. And today, you have control over whether or not we prioritize safe firearm storage. I ask you to invest in the dream of Livermore being truly a family-friendly community where gun violence has no place to wreak havoc. You and I both know there are myriad other challenges we have to face. Let's not allow gun violence to continue to be one of those challenges. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to remind any future speakers that gun violence storage is on Item 6.2, and this period right now is for items that are not on our agenda. But thank you for your comments, and we'll keep them in mind for 6.2. But make sure any future speakers are for items not on the agenda. Thank you.
The final speaker is Amber. Amber, please unmute yourself.
Hi, are you able to hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, all, for taking your time and being here tonight. I, my name is Amber Otterston, and I'm a lifelong resident of Livermore. I am now raising my family here, and I am here to help support the Livermore Pleasanton firefighters. I have had the Livermore Pleasanton firefighters respond to support multiple of my family members, to complete fire inspections at my place of work, and to respond to neighbors in need of help. I respect and appreciate the hard-working firefighters who are dedicated to keeping our family and community safe. I respectfully ask the city of Livermore to take a stand against the unfair actions of the negotiating team for the Livermore Pleasanton firefighters and settle a fair contract so we can return the focus to keeping the city a desirable place to live, work, and visit. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. We're closing public comment on the citizens' forum at this time, and we're now on to the consent calendar. But Councilmember Kik, you wanted to.
Yeah, I just wanted to, oh, this is extra loud now. I just wanted to ask a question to our city manager, Mark Roberts, based on some of the comments we got just now. Is it true that fire response is delayed because of a contract delay?
The answer to that is no. Our fire department is still responding to all 911 calls across both Livermore and Pleasanton. So we want to be quite clear about that. If people are interested in more information about the negotiation process, there's information on the city's website. You can click at that and see both proposals from the city and the union as well. Read information about that. So we do want to be as transparent as possible in our negotiations. We are moving through the process of impasse, and there is a date set for that with the impartial fact-finder. And so that process, we are committed to following that, going through that process. And of course, we do want to ultimately be back into contract with our firefighters.
And just to reiterate, no calls are being ignored due to lack of contract.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. We're now on, onto Consent Calendar 5.0. And consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by the city council with a single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide public input must submit a speech card or use the raised hand feature in Zoom during the public comment period to comment on any of the consent calendar items. At this point, I'd like to ask, are there any of the consent calendar items that the council would pull from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none. At this point, I would like to open a public comment on the consent calendar. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us on this?
Mayor and council members, we have one speaker, John Marchand.
I love this. Good evening, members of the council. Mayor, over the years, the city of Livermore and the Livermore community have continued to demonstrate their commitment to reducing homelessness and the impacts of homelessness on members of our community. In the five cities of the Tri-Valley, all of the shelters for the disadvantaged, the homeless, and the abused are in Livermore. Shepherd's Gate, Sojourner House, Tri-Valley Haven, and until recently, the Livermore Homeless Refuge all provided shelter and comfort to those who were unsheltered. Open Heart Kitchen has served hundreds of thousands of meals to those in our community who are hungry. Livermore has partnered with Mid Penn, Eden, and Interfaith Housing and others to provide hundreds of affordable units that help keep our seniors and families housed. Thank you to the Council Subcommittee on Homelessness, council members Trish Monroe and Bob Carling. You are closely, together with the homelessness liaison officers, to ease the suffering of our unhoused neighbors, to connect them with the services which will assist them in getting off of the streets and out of our arroyos. Contrary to the common misconception, the report in the packet tonight concluded that more than three-fourths of people that are experiencing homelessness lived here before becoming homeless. These are our neighbors. Experience has taught us that no city can solve homelessness by itself. It requires strong partnerships, significant shared resources, and multiple strategies to make a difference. I am proud to have been a founding member with other Alameda County mayors to form the Mayor's Homelessness Working Group to develop solutions like what are before you tonight. San Mateo County has also committed to end homelessness. I applaud this future partnership with Alameda County to address homelessness and the commitment to end it by 2026. We all have to step up to succeed, and this is a great start. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Now bring it, any other speakers?
Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Okay, I'll conclude public comment on the consent calendar, bring it back to the council. Does, I know no one wanted to pull anything, but does anybody want to comment on the consent calendar?
I really just wanted to be first to make the motion. I just wanted to be first to make the motion to approve it.
Oh, okay. So you made the motion to approve it? But it's okay, because I'll, I'll second the motion to approve it. Now we'll ask for any comments, any discussion on the motion. You can, now we can talk about any of this. So Vice Mayor Banano.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out Item 5.3 on the consent calendar, which is closing a really important gap in our trail system. It's referred to as T-13 Segment B, but it's a very well-known gap to me, and I know a lot of people in the community. And that's going to close a gap that when you go east on Wetmore, up to the top of the hill, where we have a beautiful multi-surface trail that ends right there by the big Olivina sign, and it ends, and then people who are on their bikes are walking, they get on a royal road, very curvy road with very little shoulder, and people will be discouraged from going any farther. And when you go farther, you get to Sycamore Grove, you get to beautiful Wenti Vineyards. It's a really great completion of that part of the network. So it'll take you all the way to Sycamore Grove, the Arroyo Road entrance to Sycamore Grove. And I just think it's, it's, will invite so many more people to walk and bike in that part of town because they don't have that dead end. So I just think these gaps, even if they're small gaps, it makes a huge difference to the community. It's the difference between people saying, I can get this far, but I got to cross that gap to get to another trail, and they don't want to do it. So these gaps are super important, and I just really wanted to point out that we're, we're doing a great job on that stuff, and it's, it makes a big difference to people. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to point out that, you know, if we look at this consent calendar, there's a significant amount of effort and resources being devoted to our social needs, you know, 5.4, 5.5, 5.7, and the upcoming 6.1, as former Mayor Marchand mentioned. So at this point, any further comments? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kik.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
All right, passes unanimously. So at this point, I'm going to do another reordering of the agenda and bring Item 7.3 up. And that's the, very pleased we can do this. It's a resolution appointing and approving an employment contract with a new city manager. And our human resources manager, Nancy Diaz, will provide a brief staff report.
Honorable mayor and city council members, following the announcement in May of City Manager Roberts' impending retirement, council directed staff to begin a recruitment process to select a new city manager. Working with the executive recruiting firm, Bob Murray and Associates, a nationwide search began on January 3rd of 2022. The recruitment was open for over a month. It was widely advertised in a variety of diverse locations, including the International and City County Management Association, ICMA, League of Women in Government, California City News, and California City Management Foundation, just to name a few. The recruitment included meetings and listening sessions from the community and members of the community and stakeholders from the community. Ultimately, 27 applications were submitted. Thirteen of the 27 applications were determined to be qualified, and the council identified the top six best qualified candidates to interview. Following multiple rounds of interviews with the city council, the Livermore executive team, and a rigorous background check, Mariana Mari Sheba was selected as the best qualified candidate. Ms. Mari Sheba holds a Bachelor of Arts in Urban Studies from San Francisco State University, where she graduated summa cum laude, and a master's degree in public policy from the University of California, Berkeley's Goldman School of Public Policy. She's an experienced local government leader with over two decades of wide-ranging municipal experience across California. Therefore, Exhibit A of our staff report details the terms of the five-year contract between the city of Livermore and Mariana Mari Sheba that the staff has submitted for today for council's consideration.
Okay, thank you. At this point, do we have any members open public comment on this item? Do we have any?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council. Any members of the council? We've got Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Diaz, for that fine report. I just wanted to excuse me, mention to the community that as she pointed out, we had some awfully good candidates, and I think we, as a group, spent a fair amount of time and energy reviewing the fine set of candidates that were brought to us. And I think every one of us is confident that we've made a fantastic selection. We're certainly sad to see Mr. Roberts retire, but I understand at this point it'll be a wonderful opportunity for him to conclude his career here, and we're looking forward to Ms. Mari Sheba joining the community and our staff and, and lead us into the future. So I want to, I certainly support every part of the contract and welcome her to join our community.
Councilmember Kik.
I'm very excited also, and it wasn't mentioned, but I think it's important. Mariana's not coming alone. She's coming with her two children. And I was once a new mom, well, they're 12. She's not a new mom. I was new to the community with my children, and Livermore welcomed me in with open arms, and I know that will be the same for you. So welcome. And the same to Marisha and Toleh. We can't wait to meet them, and we're very excited to have you lead us often to do even more great things for the community.
Okay, Vice Mayor Banano.
Yeah, first, I'd just like to thank my fellow council members. We really took this job of finding and hiring a new city manager extremely seriously, as I think everyone appreciates how important this job is. And I just think we all worked very diligently and hard with great support from staff, Ms. Diaz in particular, and our consultant, everyone who supported us, I think really did a great job making sure we got all the material we need, and we, we worked through it, and I, I'm really pleased that we've moved, moving forward with Ms. Mari Sheba. I think that we've been so lucky to have Mark for so many years. He's not leaving us quite yet. We'll get, we'll get our chance to roast him. I mean, I mean, celebrate him, sorry. But I just want to let the community know that I think we made a great choice and that we've been lucky to have Mark, but we're very lucky to have Ms. Mari Sheba now, and I hope the whole community will reach out and welcome her and her children. And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, Councilmember Monroe.
Well, the, the nice thing about going forth is you can say ditto, and that's, that's sort of it. What I, what I would say, though, because, you know, I'm never going to just say ditto, is that the thing that I appreciate about the process, in addition to the candidates, in addition to the process that we as council went through, is the movement from past to future, and that this seems to be taking place in a way where we are respecting and appreciating everything about our past and in, in the person of Mr. Roberts, and transitioning with what looks to be very smooth into Ms. Mari Sheba. So here's, here's to building more community altogether, and welcome.
Okay, I'll go next. I mean, we've heard several comments about how glad we are to have been able to hire someone as well-qualified as Mariana to succeed Mark, who's done an outstanding job over the past decade. And at this point, I'll just simply say to Mariana, welcome to Livermore, and I'm very much looking forward to working with you in service of our community in the future. Thank you. And at this point, how about if we take the vote, and then we can hear from Mariana?
I believe we have to move approval of the contract, and I will do so.
Yes, second. Okay, moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
I'm sorry, Mayor, who was the second?
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kik.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye, it's unanimous, and I'll just say a very enthusiastic unanimous, so welcome. And if we could hear from you?
Honorable Mayor Warner, Vice Mayor Banano, and councilmembers Carling, Kik, and Monroe. I'm both honored and excited to be here this evening. Thank you for your vote of confidence in me as your next city manager. Livermore is truly a remarkable community, and I look forward to working with you, our staff, our residents, businesses, and numerous partners to continue building on Livermore's strong foundation of success. To Mark, I realize I have some big shoes to fill, no pressure. Thank you for what you've built here organizationally, and thank you for your support as we go through the transition. To the executive team, you are exceptional caring professionals, and I look forward to being a part of your team. To residents and businesses and our numerous partners, look forward to getting to know you and working with you together to serve Livermore. And lastly, unfortunately, my children, Toldik and Marisha, could not be here tonight due to school, but they're watching. And we look forward to becoming a part of this community. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just mention that we were also fortunate enough to have completed this process, so there's some overlap. And, and it's, it'll be a really, I think, extremely smooth transition, and we're on a really good track. And so thank you so much for joining us. Okay. We're, we're now on to item 6.1, hearing to consider the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program's annual action plan for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and authorizing submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We have the staff presentation, please.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, Amy Walker, our management analyst in Housing and Human Services, is going to walk us through the PowerPoint this evening.
Good evening, mayor, council, and the public. My name is Amy Walker, and I'm a management analyst, one for the Housing and Human Services Division. The item before you tonight is a public hearing for fiscal year 2223 for the federal action plan. I'm going to start by doing a brief overview of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's, also known as HUD's National Objectives and Goals, for which are used to guide the city on what programs can be funded with these monies. HUD's three main national objectives are benefiting low and moderate income persons, assisting in preventing and/or elimination of slum and blight, and meeting an urgent need that poses an immediate threat to health and safety. All program funding from the Community Development Block Grant must meet at least one of these national objectives. HUD also has a set of priorities, needs, and goals that the Community Development Block Grant must adhere to. They are creating economic opportunities, creating suitable living environments, and providing decent, affordable housing. The city must show that programs funded with the Community Development Block Grant are working towards meeting these goals. I'm going to do an overview of the action plan. The action plan HUD requires that all state, county, and local governments receiving Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Funds complete an annual action plan that identifies federal, state, and local funding resources that the city will utilize to meet priorities established in the five-year consolidated plan, which covers fiscal year 2020 through 2024. The annual action plan identifies the city's goals, priorities, and implementation to serve Livermore's low-income residents. The city of Livermore is an entitlement recipient for the Community Development Block Grant from HUD. And then for the home funds, we are a member of the Alameda County Home Consortium, and we receive an annual funding allocation from the county. This is a sep, the county, it's a separate process for the home funds, but we run it parallel with the CDBG process. So for our action plan, this was the timeline for it this year. In December of 2021, grant application, we had a grant application workshop with the Tri-Valley Cities. And then in January, we did a notice of funding availability and request for proposal. In February, at the Human Service Commission meeting, new applicants were asked to give presentations on their programs. And then in March, the Human Service Commission made their final grant recommendations. And today, we are here for the required public, public hearing and council approval of funds. So for this year, we have estimated amounts for the Community Development Block Grant. The estimated entitlement amount is estimated at $432,000, and the home allocation is estimated to be $139,500. As of tonight, HUD has not released the final allocation amounts, but they did give us direction on it, and basically, they, the amounts presented before you tonight are amounts that were last year's allocation, and then the action plan and the grant awards will be increased or decreased proportionately based on what HUD's final allocation is for the year. And so in conclusion, the recommendation, the Human Service Commission and staff recommend that city council adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 202223 annual action plan and authorize its submittal to Alameda County for inclusion in the Alameda County Home Consortium report in submission to HUD, and authorize the city manager or his designee to sign all related documents and to make adjustments to the action plan as needed based on HUD's final allocation. And that is the conclusion of my presentation.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
There was no?
No comments have been received.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Any comments, questions? Oh, Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out and thank Mr. Oranga and his team for all the hard work that they put into this. I, I think there are a couple of items on the consent, consent calendar that also dealt with the homeless and those of low, low income. And this is just another example of the care and the dedication that we have in this community, looking out for those that are less fortunate than many of us. And I just want to congratulate again Eric and Amy and I see Josh here, that team working for Paul Spence with his leadership. And the the ability to bring in outside resources to help the city with our, our neighbors. I think Mr. Marshawn mentioned that earlier in his comments. And so again, I want to congratulate all of them for the fine work that they do, and I hope that the community recognizes that we try to take care of all the people that live within the borders of this fine city of Livermore. Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
I would, I would echo the, that thanks and the work that's being done on this report. And going back to, I believe it was three items on, on the consent calendar that speak to affordable housing, to homelessness, and to work private, private-public partnerships, nonprofit public partnerships, and how we allocate money. It really does take all of us working together to, to make this happen. We can be proud of what we've done, and we can also say, Ed, yes, there's more we can do and will be doing going forward. So thank you for what you're doing. Here's to continuing that work in the future. And here's hoping that there's not too many roadblocks that are placed in our way. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to add the, the, thanks also to the Human Services Commission for going through a lot of work to make, you know, tough decisions. And I looked at the lists, and they, it all looked very reasonable and very, it's not easy to make those decisions. So thank you for that as well. Any other comments? If not, could I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. We have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kik.
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye, passes unanimously. We're now on to item 6.2, and I seem to think we might have some people in the audience that are interested in this. So I, I saw you taking the pictures of yourselves earlier. After we get through this, you should come down here and get a picture as well if you want. But at this point, can we have the staff presentation, please?
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, Captain Sarsfield is going to lead us through this next item.
Thank you, honorable mayor, vice mayor, and city council members. As you know, I'm Captain Matt Sarsfield with your police department, along with Chief Young. I'm here for item 6.2, the Safe Storage of Firearms Ordinance Amendment. Currently, our LMC Chapter 8.14 Public Nuisance promotes and protects public safety and general welfare of the Livermore community against activities and conditions that negatively affect or interfere with the community at large. Though there's a penal code section that addresses a gun owner's responsibility to secure their firearms, it only applies to those that know or reasonably know or should know that a child is likely to gain access to a firearm. Currently, the only LMC code that we have that addresses trigger locks pertains to a firearm dealer doing business in our city that's required to provide a trigger lock or other similar device upon sale or lease of a firearm. Amending and adding unsafe storage of firearms to the public nuisance city ordinance would specifically address the safe storage of a firearm in a residence and give law enforcement officers another tool to protect and prevent children from accessing unsecured firearms. Failure to secure a firearm would be a public nuisance that would be, could be abated under the abatement process or through administrative citations and fines. Finally, the intent of the amendment is to grant access to firearms by children and other persons who may be at risk of harming themselves or others by prohibiting a person from keeping a firearm in their residence unless the firearm is in a locked container or has a trigger lock engaged. That concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions or comments.
Thank you. At this point, I'll open the public hearing on this item. Do we have anyone who wishes to address us?
Yes, we do, mayor. First, we have Ann Everton, followed by Janie Dobbs and Cynthia Shon.
Good evening, Mayor Warner and city council members. I'm Ann Everton, your neighbor from up the road in Pleasanton. Thank you for considering the safe firearm storage ordinance for Livermore. Securing guns in all residences can, as you've heard, undoubtedly reduce firearm tragedies in our Tri-Valley community. Dublin and then Pleasanton have passed ordinances like yours proposed. But I can't help thinking about my neighbor's kids, now grown, and with young families of their own, who live here in Livermore. I want the same protections for them here as we have in my town. Your yes vote could prevent a suicide attempt from being fatal by over 80%. Your yes vote could mean avoiding an unintentional shooting by a child who accessed an unlocked gun and thought it was a toy. Real-life studies show that your yes vote will not take away a gun owner's ability to defend themselves with their gun in their home. Your yes vote will send a loud and clear and unified tri-valley message that we value the safety of our community members, especially our children, by requiring responsible storage of firearms and ammunition. We all want our communities to be as safe as possible, and our children to grow up happy and healthy. Your yes vote will help realize this goal. Thank you.
Next, we have Janie Dobbs and Cynthia Shon, followed by Lori Herbert.
I, I should mention, even though you guys were quiet with clapping, but our process here is so that we don't, you know, had to disturb the speaker, because some people might not agree, some people do agree. So what we, our process here is if you agree with what the speaker says, just raise your hand. We can see it, and it, so we'll know which, how it is. So if I could ask you to do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Janie Dobbs. As the lead for Livermore Valley Moms Demand Action for Guns Sense in America, I am so grateful that you are addressing the importance of secure storage of firearms today. I'm a retired teacher of 34 years. I became involved with Moms Demand Action after the tragedy at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Since then, I learned that 80% of school mass shootings are done by current or former students using an unsecured firearm obtained from their home or the home of a relative or friend. This simple act of requiring that firearms be securely stored in a locked container or disabled with a trigger lock is the single most effective action communities and schools can take to decrease the possibility of a school shooting. As I dug deeper into learning about gun deaths in the U.S., I also tragically learned that school shootings were just the tip of the iceberg. I learned that the leading cause of death to children in the U.S. is from firearms. I learned that annually, more than 3,000 children and teens are shot and killed, and 15,000 more are shot and wounded. That's about 51 young people every day. I also learned that two older children die every day in this country by suicide from an unsecured firearm they obtained from the home. 4.6 million children live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded firearm. All of these tragedies because children and teens had easy access to unsecured firearms. And all of these tragedies preventable. Some of you may be thinking that California has the strongest gun laws in the nation, so why would we need a city ordinance? And that's because California Penal Code 25100 does not apply to all homes, and it does not define what safe storage is. Others may think, I don't have kids, so why do I need to lock up my guns? Sadly, there are numerous examples where a child did visit a grandparent, a babysitter, or a family friend, and tragically shot themselves or others. And unsecured firearms in any household can easily become crime guns after being stolen in a home robbery. We can be both respectful of a person's right to own a firearm and protect our community from gun deaths. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
Cynthia Shon, Lori Herbert, and Kyoko.
Thank you, mayor and city council. I'd like to start by just noting a few of the recent headlines in our local paper. Livermore Police Investigates Shooting of a 15-Year-Old. Four People Shot Within a Two-Hour Period. Juvenile Arrested in Weekend Fatal Shooting. These are only a few of the many similar headlines in our local paper, and that's just from this week alone. I have lived in the Tri-Valley for over 25 years, and as a concerned citizen, mother, grandmother of kids that live in this wonderful city, I urge you to vote in favor of the safe storage ordinance being considered by the city council. I urge you to vote in favor of the Safe Storage Ordinance being considered by the city council. Our country has experienced a huge increase in gun sales. In fact, the United States represents about four percent of the world's population, and yet we own almost fifty percent of the world's guns. That figure alone is tragic. Recent studies have shown that increasingly easy access to guns correlates with an increase in child and teen deaths. In 2019, firearms became the leading cause of death for American children and young adults. In fact, nearly one thousand six hundred children are killed by guns every year, with California averaging two hundred and forty child deaths annually. If gun owners were required to keep their firearms locked, that alone could save hundreds of lives. The easy access to guns is a huge problem. This country has all kinds of laws to protect children. Things like bike helmets, car seats, fences around swimming pools, toy manufacturing, and more. So when it comes to guns, which are actually designed to cause harm, how can we afford to be so cavalier? This ordinance has nothing to do with background checks or making it harder to obtain a gun. It has everything to do with keeping guns away from children and teens who should not be handling or playing with firearms. An ordinance, excuse me, requiring all gun owners to lock their guns in a safe or other secure method, not a closet shelf or drawer, would close some serious loopholes in our current laws. We all need to stop and think. The use of threats and violence is not the answer to our problems. We must stop promoting this idea simply by allowing it. When will we be done with hand wringing and thoughts and prayers? Before we actually start doing something about this tragic and preventable situation? When will, when will our children's lives be more important than gun ownership? This ordinance is a small but very important step in that direction. Thank you.
Lori Herbert, Kyoko, followed by Mary Perner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lori Herbert. I've been a resident of the Tri-Valley for forty-four years. Why am I here tonight? I'm here because nearly ten years ago, a former student of Sandy Hook Elementary School walked in and killed twenty babies and six educators with an assault weapon. I'm here because since that time, school shootings have become so commonplace, so anticipated, that active shooter drills are an expected part of a school calendar. I'm here because sales of firearms escalated dramatically during the pandemic. The increase in gun violence was just as dramatic. I'm here because reports of gunshots on Highway five eighty are becoming routine. I'm here because twelve days ago, on April thirteenth, shots rang out in central Livermore, and a forty-year-old man was shot related to a confrontation about vehicles doing donuts. I'm here because two days later, on April fifteenth, gunfire was reported across the street from the Pleasanton Police Station. Later, a victim was located in Snoll. His vehicle had bullet holes, and the victim had a stab wound to the neck. I'm here because on the same day, a fifteen-year-old girl was found in a car near Los Bacitas College, seriously injured from a gunshot wound. She died from her injuries. And just like Cynthia, I found these three stories in last Friday's edition of the local newspaper. Didn't have to do a whole lot of research. I'm here because although these are the stories that make the local news, what we don't hear about is the most frequent incidence of firearm deaths, which is suicide. Suicide accounts for two-thirds of gun deaths. I'm here because, as everyone knows, law enforcement personnel are at an elevated risk of gun violence, injury, or death. Their mission is to make us safer, and we want them all to be safer, too. They know only too well the true picture of gun violence here, which is why I am grateful for their participation in drafting this ordinance. I am here because the number one predictor of gun violence is easy access to guns. It is time for us to stop making it so easy for guns to get into the wrong hands. Mostly, I'm here because two of my three adult children, the most precious humans in my life, along with scores of friends, all live here in Livermore. Lastly, I'm here because my family and I support the life-saving Safe Storage Ordinance one hundred percent. Thank you so much.
Kyoko, then Mary Perner, then we will transition to Zoom comments.
Good evening, city council member, vice mayor, and mayor. And I actually came here to thank everybody who has been involved to create this ordinance, as well as the activation of my fellow Moms Demand Action. I first engaged to the gun violence prevention back in two thousand thirteen. At that time, Livermore didn't have any activists, or Tri-Valley didn't have any. And since the Marjory tragedy, we actually had much for our lives back in two thousand twenty eighteen, eighteen. And at that time, we had over a thousand people joined that March. And today, we have the conversation with city council members, staff, and most importantly, law enforcement. We have communication open. And I'm pretty sure we can actually keep our safe, our community safe together. And that is really warming my heart. And thank you so much for everybody.
Mary Perner, then we will transition to Zoom comments.
Good evening, Mayor Warner, council and community members. My name is Mary Perner, and I'm a thirty-four-year Livermore resident. I have a story. When my son Rick was about nine years old, his grandfather wanted to give him a BB gun for Christmas. I hate guns and objected strongly. There had been two family tragedies, one ended in death and one in a disabling injury, a lifelong injury. But Fred, my husband, approved of the gift, and the gun arrived. I wanted no part of it. Fred spent a couple of weekends teaching Rick how to use the firearm. In between, the gun was stored high on a closet shelf. One evening, Fred and I returned from work, collected Rick from the sitter down on Fish Creek Road, and headed up the mountain to our home. When we entered the bedroom to change clothes, we spotted a bullet hole about ten feet up. It was a twelve-foot window, window wall. We were on a Catskill mountainside, isolated. There were woods in every direction. Hunters were common in and out of season. Upsetting and expensive to replace those windows, and it was unsettling to think about bullets flying our way, but that was life in the country. Twenty-five years or so later, my son found the courage to tell me what really happened. He and Nicole, his best friend, the babysitter's son, had hiked up the hill and crawled through the big dog door and somehow accessed the closet shelf, grabbed the gun and bullets, which were apparently stored nearby, and went out shooting. Later, they managed to replace the gun. They were children, acting like children, and they kept this a secret all that time. We had not secured the gun beyond the reach of young children. The ammunition was also accessible. Perhaps the gun was loaded on the shelf. I don't know. This could have been so much more than a bullet through a window. It could have been another tragedy. For our children's sake and for everyone's sake in Livermore, I urge this council to add provisions to firmly regulate safe, secure residential firearm storage with this new provision. Thank you.
The next speaker is Marilyn Dykstra. Marilyn Dykstra, please unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. My name is Marilyn Dykstra. I've been a resident of Livermore for twenty-five years and a volunteer with Livermore Valley Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense Laws for five years. I grew up in a family that owned firearms. Both my parents were hunters who kept their shotguns locked in a cabinet. What? You want to use your firearms for home security? With modern firearm vaults and locks, you as owner can access your firearm in seconds. So there's no reason not to lock it up. Why am I concerned? One, with a pandemic in 2020, gun sales surged sixty-four percent. Two, the number of unintentional shootings of children eighteen and under rose thirty-one percent from March through December twenty twenty, then during the same time period in twenty nineteen. And the spring of twenty twenty-two, unintentional shootings became the number one cause of deaths for children eighteen and under. These shootings are not accidental because they are preventable by simply locking up firearms. Locking up firearms also prevents teen suicide, stolen firearms, and school shootings whose perpetrators often use borrowed unsecured firearms. I ask you, please support a Safe Storage of Firearms Ordinance in Livermore. Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the public comments received.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for a council deliberation. Do we have any comments on this? Let's see. Okay, councilmember Keg.
So I would like to share a story. Many years ago, over fifty years ago, my great uncle, so my grandfather's brother, was killed accidentally playing with an unsecured firearm in a home. They were playing cops and robbers. And he shot his friend, point blank. It was tragic. I didn't get to meet him. If that firearm was secured, I probably would have. All of my other great uncles are still alive and well. The tragedy was not just that someone lost their life. The trauma that that child who accidentally shot my family member went through was significant, and the trauma to the rest of the families involved was also extremely damaging. Ordinances like this could have prevented said tragedy. And even if someone did not follow the ordinance, there would be some sense of acknowledgement that something was done that was wrong. It was not uncommon to have unlocked, unsecured firearms in the fifties. So I will raise my hand in support of everybody's work here today. I really appreciate the advocacy of Moms Demand Action. Their comments and their letters of support were fact-based and followed up with sources, and they were always available to answer my questions. So thank you for your work and bringing this to our community. It would have been great to have before, but at least we can now do better for my children to ensure that a tragedy like that does not happen again. Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
So I'm a Moms Demand Action lurker. I appreciate all the work that you do in this area. It is guns are dangerous. They are. And providing, finding tangible ways to enable them to be less dangerous is really important. I really appreciate this ordinance because it does just that. It isn't sweeping and huge. It is, we can take this one piece and we can make accidental shootings less unlikely because it's just that one more barrier between a child getting a gun, somebody who's feeling, a teenager feeling depressed getting a gun, and doing something that they might regret if they have the opportunity to. So I really appreciate the work you've done. I appreciate this, this, this ordinance. I'll share a story of my own, which has to do with another piece of this, which is, actually, before I do that, I did want to say, this only takes care of pieces of this. So one of the stories that was mentioned was the shooting, or the, you know, several people alluded to the shootings on five eighty, the donut spinny thing. This isn't going to take care of that. But it will take care of the other, you know, some of these other accidental pieces. So just to be, to be clear about that. So that sort of leads into this other story, which is education and how we think about educating people around gun use. So it's my story is when my kids were young, Don Miller, who was both a raging liberal and a member of the NRA, said, you know, everybody should know how to use a gun. And I'm going to offer a class in gun education. Kids eleven to thirteen or so took the class. I did some shooting myself at the range. And a story was done, this was a part of my synagogue, so the story was, was done by the local Jewish paper. The photographer came out and said to the kids, all right, I want you to point the gun at the camera so I can take your picture. These were kids. I can, I can see the police officers here looking at me like, are you kidding me? That's exactly what the kids did. The kids looked at this and said, that's not what you do. We're not going to do that. That's not safe. They learned. And so that's the other piece of this. This ordinance is great. I support it. And I hope that we can also move towards this other piece of of intentional understanding of what this is about.
Okay, councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I support this as well. I had a couple of questions for the chief and the captain. One is, do we ever have buybacks of guns here in Livermore? I mean, that'd be another way to help was to buy back firearms.
Yeah, I don't recall having one since I've been here.
Might be something we could consider at some point. The other thing is, I've never owned a gun, so I have no idea, is a trigger lock easy to acquire?
They are. When you purchase a gun, they, they provide them, and we also provide them at the kiosk at the police department for free.
Oh, okay. So that'd be important to let the community be aware of that, that there are trigger locks there at the police station for free. So, Ken, thanks for your presentation. I wholeheartedly support this endeavor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I want to just say that I really appreciate the community group here bringing this to our attention and working with our attorney's office and the police department to craft a good ordinance. And this shows, you know, serves as an example for not only on this issue, but we've had other issues around anti-vaping. And so you, again, demonstrate the value of being involved, active, and you can make a difference, and you did. So I really appreciate that. Maybe I'm a little ahead of this, but maybe we need a vote at this point. So I'll move the, this staff recommendations on this.
Second.
And we've got it moved in, moved in seconded. So can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Keg.
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Passes unanimously. It was great. Really appreciate the work you did. And as I said earlier, I saw you taking photos. If you want to come down here and take a photo, you're welcome. Because we can take, we can take the chance if you wanted to. Yeah, just right now. You're allowed. Sure. Well, thank you. Thank you. Really paid off. So we're now So we're now on to item 6.3, hearing to receive and consider protests and direct staff to proceed with field abatement work on non-compliant properties under the 2022 Fire Hazard Abatement Program.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, the city manager, and our fire marshal Ryan Rucker is going to lead us through this item.
Good evening, our honorable mayor and council. I'm here also with chief, Fire Chief Joe Testa. On March 14, 2022, the city council adopted Resolution 2022-026, declaring existing refuge, existing conditions of growing weeds, accumulated refuge, rubbish, or dirt on private property, streets, parkways, and sidewalks adjacent to each parcel of real property are a public nuisance and should be abated. Parcel owners have been advised to abate weeds and debris which constitute fire hazards. Abatement standards have been mailed to owners or posted conspicuously on their property in cases where a mailing address was insufficient. Property owners can avoid enforcement by completing abatement work in accordance with guidelines or protest the need to abate hazards at this public hearing. The cost incurred for nuisance abatement and any assessments will be confirmed by the council at a future meeting. Staff recommends that the city council consider any and all protests. And if the council find appropriate, adopt a resolution overruling protests and direct staff to proceed with necessary wood abatement on all parcels requiring abatement. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us on 6.3?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
No one? So I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for a council deliberation. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. We have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kike.
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Passes unanimously. So, thank you. We're now 7.1, Resolution approving the 2022 City of Livermore State and Federal Legislative Platform. We have the staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager, and this evening I am presenting the 2022 State and Federal Legislative Platform. You may have noticed two similar-looking items attached to your report this evening, and I would like to clarify upfront that only one of those two is before you for approval this evening, and that is the city's state and federal legislative platform. The other is included as an informational item, and I will speak to that at the end of my presentation. The city's 22 ledge platform provides a formalized proactive approach to monitoring and addressing the hundreds of state and federal legislative bills that go through the cycle every year. The platform is based on Livermore core values and principles, as well as city council goals and priorities. It provides direction and guidance, allowing staff to respond quickly, either in support of or opposition to proposed legislation, especially in time-sensitive areas. The platform was first developed in 2013 and is updated annually. Each year, the current platform is reviewed under a few different lenses. First, it's reviewed by each department for issues that may come up during the current legislative cycle in their area of expertise. Second, the city's needs and issues, current needs and issues are taken into account. And finally, with an examination of the Cal City's priorities and strategies. Feedback from all of these areas are incorporated and presented in draft form this evening for your consideration. This year, the city's platform remains mostly unchanged from the previous few years, but there are a few new positions proposed related to infrastructure, building and public safety, and equal access to information and resources in the library. Additionally, in response to previous council direction, the previously named local control category has been more appropriately renamed community-focused governance, which is a better expression of the need for Livermore to advocate for legislation that provides guidance or regulation from the state while allowing appropriate local implementation that fits the needs of our community. And as I mentioned at the beginning of my report, the second item is the Tri-Valley Cities Legislative Framework. The TVC framework allows the five cities of Livermore, Dublin, Pleasanton, San Ramon, and the town of Danville to advocate collectively on important regional issues such as transportation and housing. Advocating as a collective region allows Livermore's voice to be amplified at the state and federal level because as a region, we represent over 350,000 people. And if we were a city, we would be the 11th largest in the state. The platform overlaps many of the items in our cities. The framework overlaps many of the platform items in our local platform and is attached as an item to your agenda this evening. Therefore, staff is recommending the city council adopt a resolution approving our 2022 state and federal platform. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll open a public comment on the item. Do we have any?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the council. And Vice Mayor Banano.
Thank you for that report. I have no real issue with any of these broad topic areas or our position as described in this document. My concern a little bit, or my concern is that as a council member, this is, we're signing up for this, these positions, either pose, monitor, support. And I don't feel that I'm as well-informed as I could be. And this opportunity really doesn't allow us to get to delve into deeply and have discussions on the issues that we're being asked to pretty much sign up for tonight. These are some of the most critical issues we face, and I think that I'd like to be a little bit better informed as a councilperson going forward. And I think there's a couple of options that we could consider. One might be wolf briefings before this, where we really get to understand what these positions mean and how to communicate perhaps with our community members who might ask us, you know, why have we signed up for this particular position on this particular issue? And we're just, don't have the background that we might need to be able to communicate it. And so that's one option. Also, I'm interested in the legislation that might intersect with these positions that's coming up that, you know, we would then have a better picture of what we're going to be seeing imposed or passed, and then, you know, how it reflects our position or not. The other option could be a workshop where we get to get a more deeper dive on these positions. And these are just our most critical issues that we face as a city and that are a big part of our job to understand them. So I guess that's my, you know, I can definitely support this. I read it carefully, but I don't feel like I maybe have quite as much information as I'd like to have going forward. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. You want to comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, I do appreciate the editing of to community-focused governance. I think it's much more in line with what's happening here in the city. I did not see something in the tri-cities about local control, and that was in the tri-cities before. Was there conversation within the tri-cities about that specifically being edited or changed?
Yes, Councilmember Kike, that was an item of discussion when this, when that framework was reviewed at what the Tri-Valley Cities mayors and was taken out. It wasn't necessary for the focus areas that we wanted to drive forward this year legislatively, so.
Okay, great. And then I would just second what Councilmember or Vice Mayor Banano said about potentially a wolf briefing next year. Just as sometimes we'll get a phone call from a newspaper to say, what do you think about X legislation? And it would be great if we had a more detailed answer to give them than check out our legislative platform. So, but as this is right now, I think we are in a pretty good spot.
Councilmember Monroe.
So I appreciate the removal of that term that makes me twitch to replace it with, what was it, community? Community-focused governance, that just sounds so much better. And I think it speaks to what we're actually trying to do, which is find an appropriate way, those areas that are within our sphere of influence and those areas that should not be. I would agree with my colleagues that I, you know, I follow some of these areas very closely, some of these areas not so much. So having a briefing ahead of time would be great. And then moving to the, how do we communicate this? One of the things I've noticed shortly after being elected was how odd the place of cities is within the governance structure and how little understanding I had coming in and which, you know, means that our residents, I presume, are just as ignorant as I was. And that means that how, what can they expect from the state? What is the relationship between the state and the cities? And how do these areas of these categories? How can we communicate them? And so that speaks to what Vice Mayor Banano said as well. So second or third that, as the case may be. And other than that, I do, yes, I support this.
Okay, I'll just add, you know, this, you know, is very comprehensive. And it's important for the community to understand what we've, what we're supporting and, you know, objecting to here because it does represent who we are. And so I would urge everybody to look at this platform, I mean, or the, you know, the legislative agenda and that we, you know, and give us feedback on what the community thinks about this because this is, this really is who we are. I want to point out that there are some changes, you know, from the previous one. One I'd like to highlight is item six under planning and sustainability. And that's to support SEQA reform and in particular, to support legislation that decreases the ability for spurious lawsuits. I think what's been going on in this community is egregious and speaks to a need for change. I know that the lawsuits against Eden Housing have garnered the attention at the state level. I just want to say I'm really behind trying to fix this so that much-needed projects are not held up in an unreasonable manner. So just point that out. Is there, at this point, do we have a motion for approval?
I move.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kike.
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Now, it's just approaching nine o'clock. That's our, pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Banano.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that staff got enough direction on my request.
Well, we didn't do a matters, but let's do it right now. What I heard was essentially there was concurrence from the council to ultimately, before our pass-through next year, to provide an avenue for the council to have more insight into the details of what drives the platform and to examine a couple of different options, including a public workshop or briefings in order to accomplish that. Is that the direction?
I think that captures it perfectly, and I'm glad it's on the record since neither one of us will be here next year.
Three of us. There's a lot of that going around.
I was just going to say, Mariana, you're taking notes.
There, right. I was going to say, there's people in the room here very interested in the direction. So, and I, that, my understanding is came from all five. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, you just said a variety of oars of things we could do. I just wanted, I think we've got two people that can talk, right? So I'm the second one that can talk on this. So the, your idea of the public workshop is probably pretty good because I do think this is important to the community, and that would offer an opportunity for the community to give us feedback.
And that meets both of the criteria that we're talking about. One was a more informed council, and the other was a more informed community. It appears that a workshop would accomplish both of those. So we'll move forward as staff with that as our general direction. We'll check back in as the time gets closer to adopt the next platform.
Thank you.
So thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up. So it's nine o'clock. We'll take a break until 9:10. And what's up next is the, all your progress. So I think we got, what, a couple hours on that? Okay, good. We'll be back at 9:10.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The time is 9:09 and TV 30 will count you in at 9:10.
Okay, it's nine, 10:00. Yeah. We get another countdown here?
All right. Five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, welcome back to the Livermore City Council meeting. We're just returning from a short break. We're now on to item 7.2, which is the update on the FY 2123 City Council Goals and Priorities and Equity and Inclusion Work Plan. Can we have the staff presentation, please?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager. And I'll be presenting the first part of this item this evening, which is an update on the Equity and Inclusion Work Plan. If you'll give me just a moment, I'd like to share my screen. And, of course, it's not one of the windows that's popping up for me, even though I've opened it. Little technical difficulty with the new system. Maybe Debbie can pull it up for me. Great, thanks, Debbie. Okay. There we go. Perfect. Okay, so as I said, this is a two-part presentation and I will be doing the first part, an Equity and Inclusion Work Plan update. So as you'll recall, last summer, at the conclusion of a year-long public process, the City Council received the final report and recommendations from your Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. Tonight is a status update on those 10 recommendations that were included in that final report. I will give a brief overview on the progress that's been made to date on these recommendations, but please refer to the full work plan that is attached in your report this evening for more detail. So the first recommendation was with respect to our existing Key to the City program. Actually, next slide, thanks. And that, the recommendations around that program were to expand community awareness of the program, increase the number of times the program is offered and potentially create a similar program geared toward youth participants. And I won't read through all the bullets on that slide, but staff is making progress in this area. We are planning a Key to the City in 2023 and two Key to the Cities in 2024. Along with, we are working with the school district and the park district on how to create a youth-based Key to the City program. And then on the next slide, one of the recommendations are actually quite a few of them.
Excuse me a second. Could we get those slides up on there?
Oh. They are. Steve, could you please display the slides? Thank you. Perfect. Okay, the next recommendations were around collaborating with our regional partners. And the recommendations were specifically to collaborate on partnership opportunities with the school district, the park district, the Las Pecitas College, the Chamber of Commerce and other business partners and organizations in three areas. First is complementary areas of overlap on youth programming. The second is youth-focused training and career opportunities. And the third is sharing Livermore's cultural diversity. On the youth programming item and sharing cultural diversity, staff is engaging monthly with our partners, discussing the various ways that our organization's youth programming can cross-pollinate with each other. And another example is that the agencies are cooperating to bring Unity Day this fall as a joint collaboration. And then on the next slide, on the youth training item, staff is collaborating with our partners on several items, as you can see listed on the slide. I'll just name a couple of them. The Tri Valley Innovation Fair, our high school senior arts awards, and family disaster preparedness. And then the next slide, another area of recommendation was around our advisory body recruitments and our many volunteer opportunities in the community. The recommendation from the Subcommittee was to expand our outreach and advertisement efforts in these areas to reach all segments of the community. And as you can see on the slide, staff has made significant progress in this area with an increased amount of social media posts, more attention on this item when drafting our content for our community newsletters and more advertisements in our local newspaper. And then another area was in housing. And the recommendation here is to expand again our outreach to the communities, especially those that are most affected by housing issues, and also sharing housing-related informational and educational opportunities with the community. So in this area, staff has made a concerted effort to expand our email distribution list to include all of our nonprofits and service providers who work most closely with our local vulnerable populations. And we are continuously monitoring and adding educational content and resources to our website. And then finally, on the item of policing, there were, again, three areas where recommendations were made by the Subcommittee here. One was to finalize the stop and arrest data report. The second was to explore ways to deploy our police resources more efficiently and effectively related to mental health service calls. And the third was to increase the police chiefs and the department's awareness of community policing-related matters. So in this area, to date, as you know, the stop and arrest data report was finalized and brought to council for consideration in February of this year. The model for incorporating a mental health clinician in the field with an officer has been identified and budget for that program will be included in your budget this coming June for your council, for your consideration. And then lastly, the chief has established a chief's advisory group and they are currently developing requirements and participation processes for future participants as they move forward. So as you can see, there's quite a bit of work that has been done to date since the recommendations were reviewed by council in July. And there is more work still to come, as Councilmember Monroe spoke of earlier this evening on another item, of course. So this, but this does conclude the update so far for Equity and Inclusion. And with this, I'd like to turn it over to Mark for an update on your goals and priorities.
Good. Every two years, the City Council chooses new goals and priorities. And the council has been doing this for nearly 20 years. The purpose of choosing goals and priorities is to focus council, community, and staff attention on specific areas of change. Of course, as we've discussed many times, the priorities are not necessarily the most important things that the council does. If you want to see essentially what's most important, look to our budget, which is a plug for our May 16th Budget Workshop meeting coming up. So there's a lot of interesting information in there. But of course, as always, public safety takes up almost half of our overall city budget at the top of the listing. But these items that are listed on the slide there include areas that the council wishes to focus community, staff, and their own attention on as we move forward. Those areas this time include asset management in stormwater, downtown, our general plan update, homelessness and affordable housing, modernization, training, and workforce enhancements. Together, these items basically focus on the areas that the council wanted to move forward. A number of these goals are quite large in scale and have been goals over a significant period of time. And we've made progress across a long time period on that. We are essentially halfway through our two-year process. So this is your second update. And we'll start with asset management and stormwater on the next slide. Each of these items, I'm going to go through and have a few slides each. So I'm just going to highlight a few of them. Again, I would encourage anybody who's interested in these to actually look at the staff report and attachments because there's just an enormous number of steps and items. This is not meant to be inclusive, but it is, gives you an idea of the breadth of things. So in community engagement on asset management and stormwater, our camp outreach meetings, we've held six of those since May of '21. And staff and camp outreach committee members have presented asset management information to a number of community groups and more than 75 members within the community. And working with LARP in Zone 7, we've resumed our Living Arroyos program. City of Dublin recently joined the Living Arroyos program and we're actively now working to re-establish our in-person events for that. That was a wonderful program dealing with stormwater and we're continuing to move forward. On the next slide, you'll see that the next part of this talks about our data gathering related to asset management. Many of you, of course, know the importance of having great data to try and figure out how do we address large, complicated items. So preaching to the choir here a little bit. But one of the things we want to use that data to do is not only convey information to you as decision-makers, but convey that information to our technical and administrative and managerial staff and to the broader community. We have a very good sense overall of where our asset classes are. We're much further down the road than a lot of communities in taking a look at asset management. But we're now at the point where we can start to comprehensively, every time we're out in the field, our field staff carry handheld devices that allows them to actually input data directly into the system with a tag on where it is, what kind of an asset it is, what the picture that they're taking is of, and ability to do a short written description. It's that thing in the old days where you had to write yourself a sticky note and go back to the office. We're sort of an enormous leap forward here. And so you'll see some very, what seem like pointy-headed things about getting a system that we're using onboard, getting staff trained on it. But the leap forward from doing this has been pretty dramatic. And even our more cynical members of staff have sort of been converted as to the, to the real benefit of using these tools to get a good sense of what's going on out there in the field. So we're very excited about our use of NextGen, our training on that, our deployment of it, and our training of staff and the actual data that's starting to come back into the system now because we've actually set up the system and it's a customizable product and we've been able to customize it to meet our needs pretty easily. So we're very excited about that. On the next slide, you'll see that we've done a number of items related specifically to stormwater. First of all, updated our master plan. And then, of course, the City Council approved a resolution in January to apply for HCP grant funds to do a, complete a habitat conservation plan. Because again, anytime we're out there in the Arroyos and we touch any of the wet habitat, which is pretty much all of it by the time you're dealing with stuff that's within the 100-year floodplain area, there is significant environmental permitting. By going through a habitat conservation program, it allows us to streamline that process. So again, it's not years every time we have to touch an Arroyo. It streamlines that dramatically down. So again, it seems like an administrative step. It seems like we're talking about bureaucracy, but this does have real on-the-ground outcomes. And we're particularly excited about being able to move forward with that. In addition to our work on the HCP, we completed our FEMA annual report so property owners can continue to receive that 20% discount off of their flood insurance because we are a participating community that goes through very specific steps each year to essentially safeguard the properties that are in floodplains in our community. Moving on to downtown, our goal there is to enhance the city's vibrancy by completing critical projects downtown, ensuring the right balance of local amenities to support quality of life. And boy, you cannot go downtown without bumping into a construction project or two, or three, or four. So we've got a lot going on down there. So of course, related to the hotel, we worked with our applicant Presidio in updating their development agreement and that item was brought to the City Council. Our DDLA with Presidio was completed in December of 2021. And that, the hotel itself will be returning to the council essentially late this spring. And that, the hotel itself will be returning to the council essentially late this spring. Dealing with parking and circulation, parking, of course, as we did outreach to the community over a number of times, as we have been working on the downtown over the last 20 years. Parking's always either at or near the top of the list of making sure that our circulation works. And circulation, not just for cars, but for pedestrians and bicycles as well. But parking's boy on that list. And so the, the expansion of our garage downtown with the Ice Street Garage and adding 275 spaces is well underway. That project started on April 12th of last year, and we are on schedule for completion this summer. You can, you can really see even from that picture, there's been more work done since that picture was snapped just a couple of weeks ago. So that Ice Street parking will add about 275 new spaces in that location. And then, of course, although not on your slide, our next big step in parking is the beginning of work on our L Street parking garage, which will happen this fall. So taking each of these steps one at a time, making sure that while we're doing these projects in downtown, that we've maintained the parking that was there before we began all these projects. At each step, we've done that. And of course, Ice Street is one of the last items that we've done most recently. On the next page, you'll see that we've worked on a number of projects, Veterans Park. The council in July of 21 adopted a resolution authorizing the execution of the agreement with RRM Design Group to conduct public outreach and design and to assist in the contract administration of Veterans Park. And so we started that process with stakeholder engagement in mid-September of last year. Again, as you'll remember, Veterans Park is directly connected back to Stockman's Park and creates a continuous green space all the way through the center of that major block in downtown. Because open space was another item that the council identified as key to the overall success of downtown. The Quest Science and Society Center in, in summer of 2021, the staff approved a license agreement with Quest to begin to operate an interim educational demonstration area. So if you've been down to that area, you'll see that an area has a shade cover over it, a nice surface with which to do outdoor activities there. And of course, the council's also aware of additional steps that have been taken by our nonprofit partners, including those dealing with our Black Box Theater and Sparks. So we're looking forward to continued progress on that this spring. On the next page, you'll see we've got a picture of Livermoreum Plaza and the water ball. That is a 12,000-pound water ball. It's actually right now a ball without water. But that's, that single stone there is etched with interesting facts about Livermoreum. So we are very excited. It is onsite. It's been installed. And we have been working away on that project since July of last year. And the entire project will be wrapped up in June. So we're making great project progress. If you have been downtown, you have seen that major vegetation has been planted. So the big trees are now in. So you can start to get a feeling for what that area is going to be. And we're just about ready to lay some of the surface concrete down there. So you'll really begin to get a clear sense of what that plaza is going to look like over the next couple of weeks. We're getting very, very close. Our next item is the general plan update. And that goal is to comprehensively update the Livermore general plan, including the housing element, to address changes to regional and state policy, market trends, community preferences, the plan for growth and conservation areas for the next 25 years, and support and enhance Livermore quality of life. This process started with an extensive community outreach and engagement process. Staff, together with our consultant, who is Placeworks, have been working now for a significant period of time and in a variety of different ways, because we know that not everybody wants to come to a online workshop, or not everybody wants to come to a meeting. So we've been out in the community at pop-up events, focus groups, workshops, open houses, been at the farmer's market, asking people for what their vision of the future in the community is, and gathered some great data. The stakeholder group has been appointed, which is leading our process there. So you can see that we've conducted the visioning workshops. And on March 14th, this council adopted our draft vision statement. So we're very excited about that process. It only comes along once every 20 years. So of course, we want to make sure that everybody is involved. On our next page, you'll see that we're talking about our housing element there. Now, the housing element is one of the required elements in the general plan, but it is the one with the most regulation from the state. And it actually has to be updated on a separate schedule. But in this particular case, the update of our housing element and general plan are very closely aligned in time. Not perfectly aligned, because that would be too easy if the state allowed us to get those things perfectly lined up. But we're pretty darn close. So we want to make sure that each of the processes inform the other, that the housing element update is informed by the general plan update and vice versa. So from that perspective, we again have met with community stakeholders, and we're updating the housing element goals, policies, the quantifiable objectives. And then we have a variety of housing assessments and other very specific things that the state requires us to do. This process is well along and actually is, is leading the general plan update process by just a little bit. So the good news is those two processes are talking to each other and are very well coordinated. Moving on to our next goal, homelessness and affordable housing. Establish a homelessness strategy, engaging local partners to develop a coordinated response and expand the diversity of affordable housing opportunities in the community. And if you needed a poster child for the range of activities that we are doing in this area, it would be tonight's agenda, which had a wide range of activities on a number of different parts of this. The council has very specifically linked homelessness and affordable housing. There are those who believe that, that, that housing and homelessness are not related to each other. But, but that, of course, as we know, strangely enough, the availability and the price of housing has a direct relationship back to affordable housing. It's not the only reason that people are homeless, but it adds a dramatic additional scale to the problem when there's not adequate affordable housing. This community can be very proud of its activities. Since 1978, the city has had an inclusionary program. That means that we were one of the very first in the entire state of California and across the country to have required affordable housing built as a part of every project. So that's quite a long time that we have been leaders in this area. And some of the activities you saw this evening are examples of that. In particular, on the homeless, homelessness and homeless strategic framework, staff helped our nonprofit partners apply for federal funds. And of course, our favorite funds to, to use are other people's money to help us accomplish the goals that the council has set up for us. And applying our staff expertise to help our nonprofit partners, and in some cases, actually lead the application process, because sometimes they do need to have a direct city partner in that. And we're always looking for those opportunities and supporting our nonprofit partners, both in the direct provision of housing and in the provision of essentially building capacity in those nonprofit partners. We've helped several local nonprofits grow over the years to be able to provide those local services to folks right here in Livermore. And just to give you a sense of scale, as of early March of this year, we have distributed more than, or almost $3 million to local residents related to essentially housing-related COVID-19 rent relief funds. And this is in addition to other programs where we were able to capture and then direct federal dollars that were available either because of COVID or because of other ongoing federal programs. So we're particularly proud of that work on the rent relief program for a community of our size to move that much money through the system and into the hands of local renters is quite an accomplishment. On the next slide, we're going to talk here about essentially a number of projects. Avance, that's the former Sunflower Hill project, began construction of that. And so not only began construction, we're well along. And Avance will essentially be complete this coming summer. So we're very excited. If you've been on First Street, right across from the Safeway out near the freeway, you'll see those buildings are beginning to look really sharp as they're going to be a fantastic addition to the neighborhood, to the community. And that is going to be a community special, specializing on our developmentally disabled partners and providing a place where they can actually thrive. So we're very excited about how far that project has moved along. On Pacific Avenue, our partner Interfaith Housing, the city council on September 13th of 2021 approved the disposition, development, and loan agreement for the project. And in November, on November 16th of 2021, the Planning Commission approved the project entitlements. This puts that project in line to be able to go out and seek funding from the state through the tax credit program and other available funding sources. So those steps are fundamental. You'll remember this particular site was part of the larger strategy involving downtown that involves Stockman's Park. A tremendous win-win where it enabled us to fulfill a promise to the stockman made more than 50 years ago and have a very prominent open space in the center of our downtown dedicated to veterans and stockmen who have been in the Tri Valley area. And at the same time, the stockman then allowed us to place affordable housing in an area where that had been precluded. So a true, we ended up with far more affordable units than we would have. This project now is entitled and going through the competition process for tax credits. And we'll see some tremendous benefits moving forward there. On the Livermore Village site, of course, our Eden Housing Project has submitted their application for tax credits this last year and received one of the highest scores in the entire region. Unfortunately, as you know, that project has been delayed by litigation. But your staff, of course, does remain hopeful that we will be moving forward on that critical project. Before too long, it is a well-designed project. And of course, it's scoring in the tax credit, which is, tax credit program is extremely competitive, is just one sign of how effective that project will be. And finally, I think a number of you were at the Vineyard Project groundbreaking just a few weeks ago. And of course, construction began in March of 2022 with demolition of the existing building. And that is going to be an amazing facility that includes both services for formerly homeless folks, services for currently homeless folks, and affordable housing. On our next page here, you'll sort of see that we continue to work with our nonprofit partners, creating affordable housing ownership programs. The council adopted an update to the city's inclusionary ordinance in June 2021 to include onsite rental projects. For many years, the city's programs included both rental and ownership programs. But then a state, a court case made the rental portion of that illegal. The state came back and ultimately corrected that deficit by passing new legislation. And we came back in and added that rental portion back in. And we also obtained funds for the Bay Area Community Services Project to support shared housing, again, going out and facilitating grant dollars on that. On the next page, let's see, we've got lots of cool things happening internally to the city. And we're just going to touch a couple of those. You approved at your last council meeting, artificial intelligence to help secure our systems. And so that's already being implemented with a very, very sophisticated set of threat tracking that is able to actually automatically neutralize those threats in real time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Doesn't have to be somebody sitting in front of a screen. And that's part of our ongoing responses to our cyber attack that we had several years ago. And we now are fundamentally in a better place to respond to those ongoing threats. And it's not just a one-and-done kind of a thing. It's how good are you at this instant? So our cybersecurity is in a much better place. New software for public records requests is available on the city's website. We developed our remote workforce pilot program. You remember for a while, we were completely remote. That taught us a bunch of things, both what to do and a few things not what to do, not to do. And our current, we're in our first six months of our new program there, which is a mixture of onsite work and at-home work, working through all of the things that we're going to learn there, make any needed adjustments and move forward. But clearly, remote work for a lot of our staff is going to be an ongoing part of how we do business here. And of course, we've updated our records retention schedule. On the next page, you'll see that a lot of stuff about this room. And it may, when things are working well, you don't notice the enormous amount of technology here that allows us to be carrying on two simultaneous meetings that are fully coordinated, one in the virtual world on Zoom that allows people to see in here, and one here that allows everyone to see in here. And that sounds super easy, but it is not. So this is our second time through, and we're doing pretty well. So I have to say, we are, continue to put a lot of resources into this and training. And so far, I think we're doing really well with a lot of brand-new technology here. And then finally, on the next page, a number of items dealing with the library services moving their activities online. So it's a long time since we sort of had a, a, a physical card catalog. But this is moving that activity and a number of other activities online. All of these things either provide better service, more redundancy, a more robust system, or sometimes combinations of all three of those items. And with that, I'm going to wrap up this presentation. As you said, Honorable Mayor, could go on for several more hours with all of this great stuff we've been doing, but we want to leave a little bit for the next people who sit in this chair to be able to brag about. So we'll leave that up to the next presentation. You get about six months from now.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. At this point, I'll open the public comment. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Yeah, close. Oh.
Dollars was dispersed in the communities. And I was wondering how many residents were supported? And also county still has a rental eviction moratorium. But the how city is preparing when that is expiring? That's two questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Would, is that a question you'd like to address?
So there were a couple of questions, if I understood the questions. One had to do with how is the city going through the adjustment process as the rental eviction moratoriums come to an end? We're doing that through a number of programs. One is, the, the good news is the, over time, we have built up quite a robust set of services for renters. And so you'll remember that we do have limitations on how much essentially rent can increase annually. That is a local ordinance that the council has, has adopted. And making sure that landlords are aware of that. Every once in a while, we do get a report where somebody is not aware that there's a limitation on that. And we do move to have staff interact with folks as quickly as possible. The other item has to do with, we do have programs that if there is a very short-term reason why somebody cannot meet their rent income, in other words, some sort of an emergency, we have programs where the city has funds through our nonprofit partners to be able to help people through those very short-term issues. And if the issue is more long-term, ultimately, making sure that people are aware of what's available in the community. But I do have to say, in all my years here, this is probably one of the very tightest housing markets we've ever experienced, both on the ownership side and the rental side. So again, if people have questions, they can reach out to us directly, our Housing and Human Services folks, many of our nonprofit partners who work in the same space. But I do have to agree that for housing right now, it's not a particularly fun time, no matter candidly what your income is here. So we are clearly in a housing crisis in the Bay Area, and we unfortunately are right in the middle of that here in Livermore. So there's certainly some things that we continue to work on, but we still do have some challenges in those areas. And there, and there was another question, which I do not recall, had something to do with the, the dollars that, and I'm... Oh, that's a great question that I don't know the answer to. And no, and anybody who might know that off the top of their head is not sitting here. You'd had to ask that one earlier in the evening. We had some of our experts right here. But I don't know the answer to that. It was a bunch, but we could, we actually have a real number.
Okay. Any other... Okay, any other uh, speakers? Don't see any, so I'll close the uh, public comment on seven dot two, bring it back to the council. Uh, let's see, Councilmember K.
Thank you for this. Um, if you looked at the actual paperwork, there is a lot more pages, just like Park said. Um, but something I did want to um, point out is we are in a housing crisis. We see a checkmark next to what the city was supposed to do to get affordable housing downtown, and it's pushed back because of um, CEQA being used as a sword, which connects back to our uh, legislative update, which I think is important. Um, one of the things that is attached to that housing is the park. And we had previously discussed that they would be under construction at the same time. Is that still the plan?
Yes, because the, the buildings uh, and the park are co-terminants. I mean, they're literally right on top of each other. Having us proceed with uh, the park before the building makes sort of zero sense. So the area needs to be coordinated just as we've done any other place downtown, where we've had a bunch of things in very close coordination, right on top of each other. So that is still the plan, is to coordinate the, the development of the park and the housing.
I would just ask if we can make a notation, um, because right now it still has construction is moving forward, but uh,
Note, note to file, I have somebody here who can help me take some notes. Yes, absolutely.
To make sure that people also know that it's not just housing that's being affected. There are other things um, that are pushed back because of this. So thank you for all the great work, though, because it was really nice seeing checkmarks. We actually did stuff. It's exciting.
Okay, Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, thanks for that very comprehensive report, both from uh, Assistant City Manager and City Manager. I wanted to um, sort of on the theme of homelessness, which we've had a fair amount uh, discussion already, but I wanted to talk briefly about the mental health clinician, and I know um, that this is something that has been in the works for a while, but I I look, I do look forward to the conversation in May, when this comes back for our discussion about uh, funding that. Because I, I think we've, we've uh, actually done a pretty good job in terms of housing people over the last couple of years, I would say. Um, but uh, I think I've spoken to this earlier in some of my recent write-arounds. Uh, both with Open Heart Kitchen and with the uh, homeless liaison officers, it's clear to me that we still have some hardcore uh, homeless folks out there that really are suffering from uh, not only drug addiction, but mental health issues. And I, I look forward to this conversation, see if we can fulfill our um, objective from the E and I to get a mental health clinician to ride along with our officers uh, when that's an appropriate uh, opportunity. So um, again, thanks for the great report, and I'm looking forward to having a more conversation about the mental health clinician when uh, the budget comes back to us. Thanks.
Councilmember Monroe?
So I, I can't remember which one of these this is, but I think this might be the second one that I, I, of, of these updates that I've seen in person. Uh, but every time I'm, I'm amazed at how much happens. Um, so uh, uh, Mr. City Manager, you took the um, the, the items that we specifically said were our, our goals and priorities, and then we added in the one that wasn't, but happened anyway. Thank you very much, Ms. Martin. Um, for, for taking that on. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about, or you know, uh, 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 about what's going on with the equity and inclusion. I was really, this is the first time I think I've seen this, it laid out this way since our final report. It's very exciting to see the amount of work that's taken place, to see how um, tangible work is coming out of something, especially the areas which seemed fairly intangible um, around this. Um, whoop, where did that go? Around um, engaging the community in, in different ways. Um, so that's sort of my gen, my general take on that. Um, um, oh, actually, one more thing, which is that I was very uh, excited to see what was going on with the uh, Chiefs Advisory Committee. And that they're turning, you know, the way this is turning into something that is, what will transition it. It's coming from the group itself. One of my particularly uh, exciting things, uh, it, uh, an event that I have long wanted to see happen, it looks like it's happening, is this Livermore Day. Wondering if you could speak a little bit more about that? I know that's not what you said it was going to be, but I, the name of it, but that's, you know.
Well, um, Unity Day.
Unity Day, there we go.
Is what you're referring to that I spoke of this evening, but we are still actually working on a separate Livermore Day. If um, if we don't tie it into Unity, it's a, it's a work in progress. It might be um, a both and, as you like to say.
Could, could be. You, you just destroyed the city manager there. Okay, so, so still, still happening?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, all right, well, I, I look forward to seeing more, whether it is either or, or both and.
Yes, and Unity Day will be fabulous, whether it is combined with Livermore Day or not, um, as our partner agencies are very, very excited uh, to, to lead the charge on this.
I, I was very excited to see the amount of collaboration that's taken place. So thank you very much.
Okay, Vice Mayor Banano?
Yeah, thanks for that. I'll just add my thanks for all the work that goes into everything you all do, not just on our five priorities, but everything else, which is a, a lot in addition to the things that we've identified as our goals and priorities. So back to the equity inclusion, I really like the idea of trying to increase the um, advisory committee applicants. Um, I know sometimes we don't get a lot of applicants now that I'm on the, I don't know if it's actually a subcommittee or just interview committee for the advisory bodies. Um, I'm seeing that for real. I mean, we, we, the candidates we get are always interested and, and I think uh, good candidates, but it'd be nice to really see those numbers increase. So I would just suggest that um, we include a metric next time, where we actually try to show an increase or see if the efforts of outreach to encourage people to apply is actually um, working. To me, that's the, that's the real measure of, of whether the program's accomplishing its goals. So I had a question on one of the items that I didn't really understand. Um, it's in the homeless system and affordable housing section. Um, it's in section H, I'll just read it. Identify existing multifamily unit projects for purchase to convert to affordable slash workforce housing. Um, I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that because it sounds promising.
So there's a couple of different programs that we have explored over time, and one of them, of course, resulted in the transfer of the market rate to housing project across the street from this facility. Essentially, you'll remember that there was an apartment project on Pacific Avenue. Um, that was an existing market rate multifamily project. Um, and essentially, it was bought by a nonprofit. Um, and ultimately used uh, tax advantaged financing to be able to do that. And so that particular um, uh, project will, over time, because essentially of the significant uh, advantage of both the tax advantaged financing and the fact that it's a nonprofit, um, so they don't pay property taxes. Um, we'll be able to pass those savings along, especially to deal with folks who are just a bit above our standard definitions uh, of low and moderate. So that's one program. The other item is that the state is beginning to recognize that in some cases, it may more, make more sense to convert existing units to affordable housing, and that that can happen at a lower per-unit cost than building from scratch. Not that we should ever stop and slow down on any of the building that we're doing for affordable housing. Um, but it is essentially um, on our list of things to do, to always be out there in the marketplace and try and listen a little bit ahead. Because for the public sector, we sort of have to be a couple steps ahead because, you know, we, we can't write a check for twenty million bucks to, to bring a project down, you know, within a very short period of time. So that's essentially what you're seeing there is our exploration. We've been talking to various property owners over time um, for that. And then, of course, that's one other pillar, because of course, we've been exploring, you know, on a related but different tangent, whether any of our hotels um, are interested. That's generally more of a single-room occupancy. Um, but the project across the street is an example of one, where it was a market rate apartment project that was acquired and now will become more affordable over time.
Great, so, so a, a number of prongs to that approach, which I, I really encourage, I think.
And, and you'll see, you know, one of our strategies is, especially in the affordable housing, is have five or six or seven approaches out there, and then waiting for opportunity to sort of step into that approach. But, but unless we're searching for those and really exploring them, you know, we miss opportunities. And, and I think staff does a fantastic job of being proactive in these various areas.
Yeah, definitely. And, and I just, I just really encourage those, those approaches, because I think that the conversion idea is if, if it can be made, you know, if the deals can be made, it's, it's, it's really a great approach to quickly be able to create this kind of housing, rather than from, you know, empty parcels like we're trying to do elsewhere. Um, so one, one, I just want to make one more comment on, on the affordable housing uh, section, where we talked about the Inclusionary Housing Program, administer the Inclusionary Housing Program, where we had twelve units in the past year, and we had eight hundred and sixty-six applicants. And probably, I would guess that there are many more people that need it, and they probably, they probably knew the list was long and there was no hope by putting their name on the list. So eight hundred and sixty-six for twelve units. And that's the scale of the problem. I just think it's, it's always, I, I shouldn't be surprised, but when I see those kinds of numbers, I'm, I'm uh, still a little bit surprised by them. So anything we do in this area is just really, really important. We, I think we all agree on that, and good work on everything you've done so far. Thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to thank you. I guess this may be the, what is it, tenth or eleventh time for uh, great work. And uh, it, it's just amazing how much uh, you know, you and your staff do with limited resources across an incredible scope. That is, it's amazing. So uh, thank you, and um, a lot of work. And uh, I, for sure, we could have gone on for a long time, if we're really understanding everything uh, you do. So I think at that point, um, we're done here. We need a motion for approval.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember K?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye, it passes unanimously again. Thank you and the staff for great job. So uh, we're now on to eight dot zero, seven, three was covered earlier with a great result. So we'll uh, we're now on to council committee reports, matters initiated by the city manager, city attorney, staff, and council members. Uh, so we'll start with that Councilmember K.
I attended Valley Link on Wednesday, the thirteenth, and a TVTC board meeting on Monday, the eighteenth. And we will see, coming to us very soon, the updated um, TVTC. You give money for things. Funding, you know what I'm talking about. We're going to charge people money for building housing, for transportation. And that new dollar amount will come to us for approval. Um,
Tri, Tri Valley uh, transportation fee update.
Fee update, the fee, yes, it's a fee. That's what it's called. Thank you very much. I'm a little bit tired. Um, and so um, we had fifteen projects that we chose that we were going to allocate. There are a lot of projects on that list. We could not fund all of them in a way that would make anything happen, so we decided the top fifteen. Um, we would try to pro, provide ten percent of the um, unallocated funding. And one of the things that made it on that top fifteen was the three stations for Valley Link. Um, so I think that will be really important for our community, and I'm looking forward to having that hit this desk, so we can get um, approval here as well, hopefully. Um, and I think that's all I have for today. So, thank you.
Yes, thanks again, sort of sticking with the uh, homeless and affordable housing theme. I, along with some of my colleagues have participated in the Vineyard two-point-zero groundbreaking. Um, but I also wanted to point out, I, um, Eric Urenga and Fran Reisler gave me a uh, brief um, tour of the multi-service center, which is on Pacific Avenue. Um, and has been recently, had some renovation done to some of the uh, offices in there. And I just wanted to comment that I think uh, the upgrades have been just terrific. And if you don't, if you're not familiar with the multi-service center, it's a place for people that are struggling one way or another. It houses, for example, Abode and CityServe and Krill. And some of the other nonprofits that work with the uh, less fortunate in our community. And one of the um, things that needed to be improved was accessibility for those um, in wheelchairs, for example. And that uh, has been upgraded to meet ADA requirements. And I certainly appreciated what Eric and Fran and his team have done to bring that uh, building up to better sense and to provide better services for people. City Serve is going to move in with, I think, about a dozen employees. And um, I just think it's another way, uh, another way that the city has shown a commitment in terms of providing money uh, to provide upgrades for services, to provide services for people that, that need it. So again, I appreciated the time that uh, Eric and Fran took to show me around. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Monroe?
Well, um, much of what I have is on my uh, uh, report out, but there's a couple of things I did want to highlight. Um, the uh, I, I don't know that he's going to mention it, but uh, Mayor Warner received an award from Eden Housing for support of Eden, of, of their projects, uh, specifically the project that's, I believe, is currently delayed. Um, so that sort of speaks to um, how important it is to have advocates um, from councils and uh, you know, for, for uh, elected um, officials to support these projects, but also that that's not sufficient to get the work done. Um, and that also speaks to um, Vice Mayor Banano's point about how much housing is needed. And so I'm just going to use this moment to transition to that point about you can say you're for affordable housing, but you're only for affordable housing if you actually are for getting it built. And when we have at least eight hundred people for twelve spots, if you, if you're not actually for getting it done, just say you want it somewhere else. You're not actually for affordable housing. Um, but going back, celebrating Mayor Warner and his award. So that was one really nice thing that happened this week. Um, on the twentieth, uh, attended, I was part of the uh, East Bay Community Energy, EBCE's um, Board of Directors meeting, we received um, a discussion of the, of the legislative agenda. Um, and then a presentation on the renewable procurement, so how we get to carbon neutral. Uh, increasing green, green energy on uh, by twenty thirty. Um, and we're actually, I believe, somewhat ahead of schedule was, was the point that was made. We'll see how that goes. Uh, so that's, that was good. You can, you can check that out on the EBCE website um, for a little bit more information. Um, and then finally, the um, on the twenty-first, um, with um, Vice Mayor Banano, uh, attended the uh, Intergovernmental Committee meeting, and I just wanted to point out that together with um, with our partners, um, we're working on increasing uh, the encouragement of civil discourse in this, in this, in the city. And then um, also working on a calendar that would be, a, a reference calendar that would be accessible uh, to help people understand what important days various groups uh, observe in different ways. Um, so that's all I have.
Okay, Vice Mayor Banano?
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit. Um, I also attended the Vineyard two-point-o groundbreaking. I just wanted to add the the level of support the city provided for that financially was, you know, a major part of it. I think the project cost twenty-plus million dollars in the city of Livermore. Uh, through a variety of funding sources, contributed nine million dollars. The rest of it was, I don't know, six or seven other funding sources. So it, it shows what it takes to put together a project. Twenty million dollars. I think it started seven years before the groundbreaking. You get twenty, twenty-four units of housing. So it, it sounds really hard, and it, and it's, it is hard, but it is possible. That's the proof of principle. You can do it, but it takes a lot of effort by a lot of people to do it. And ma, maybe there are ways uh, through our, some of our leg, legislative platform planks, that we can uh, try to make these things go a little, little more quickly. Um, I'll mention that I attended the Knights of Columbus banquet on Friday night, which I got to see our Chief Testa and our Chief Young um, at that event. That's the event where the Tri Valley uh, cities honor our uh, police officers and uh, police officers and firefighters. And we had both a police officer who was associated with the anti-vaping program and one of our great firefighters honored. So it was great to attend that and, uh, celebrate all of our first responders. And I'll say finally, on Saturday, if anyone went downtown to Quest Plaza, which Mark had highlighted in his briefing about the downtown activities, you would have seen 400-plus people attending the Quest Plaza Science on Saturday event, which had to do with the science of bubbles. Um, so they not only, the kids not only had fun and the adults, but they learned about things like surface tension, light optics, all the things that actually, all the science and physics that go into making bubbles. So, um, there is a big appetite for science and that kind of activity in Stockman's Park. So it's not done yet, but there's still a lot going on. So I'll just send it there. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Monroe for, um, pointing out the award that I got from Eden Housing. It was a Civic Leader of the Year Award. And really what that does, I believe, is recognize the commitment of this council and several previous councils to, um, making sure that we fulfill our commitment for the affordable housing. And I think it also recognizes the really hard work and commitment of our staff to get this done. So I think it was, you know, presented to me, but really I view it as, it's really for us and what we've been trying to accomplish. So that's, that's what it is. Um, the other, that's the one thing about, and my other, uh, events are in the, uh, report. Uh, one thing I wanted to do and just, it's not a matters initiated, but I, it's more of information. Uh, we're going to be meeting with, you know, the, my Tri Valley counterparts and the supervisor uh, to discuss the quality of, uh, ambulance service and next steps. I mean, I've talked about this before, that there's a sense, and I believe backed up with real data, but we're going to get the information, that says we're not receiving the service that we expect. And so we want to pursue that and, uh, and find out what, what is, and then, um, uh, deal, you know, try and persuade the county to, um, step up. Uh, the other thing I want to mention, you know, we've heard, um, the, uh, various people comment on our negotiations with the Fire Department. We're also, um, the city manager and, and, um, has, we're going to be setting up our, uh, another JPA board meeting on the Fire Department, um, coming up soon. I'm not exactly sure when, uh, Mr. Roberts, when might that happen?
Um, it looks like it's the week of May 23rd. We're honing on our date at this point.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to let you know we're pursuing that. So that's, um, all I have. And now I'm going to move on to adjournment. And what I'd like to, um, this is sad, but the, the city of Livermore and, you know, this community have lost a longtime public servant, uh, James Doggett. Uh, Mr. Doggett was Livermore's longest-serving commissioner and he passed away earlier this month. He spent over 44 years serving our community on the board of the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District, working to protect this community from mosquito-borne illnesses like West Nile virus. Uh, in recognition and an appreciation for his years of service, uh, this meeting is, uh, now adjourned in his honor and memory to a regular meeting on May 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM, held in person and remotely.